The Town of Farmington. Respecting history, planning the future.
It is 7:00. I will call the meeting to order. And Joe, would you say, lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Certainly. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just a couple little housekeeping issues before we start. Our meeting with the Building Committee on February 4th will be held in the Farmington High School auditorium, not in our chambers. We're expecting a few more people than the people we have before us today. So we will expect a little more room for that one. And at that meeting, we will likely have three minutes per person for public comment. We'll discuss that more at that particular meeting. With that, I will ask if we have any public comment. And please, limit to five minutes tonight. State your name and address.
Good evening. Tim Kelly, 62 West View, and I think I can do this under four minutes. I'd like to add that we may be a small team, but we're an elite team. To sort of guide us through this and keep us moving quickly, I have a one-page handout. Just take one, pass it down. So the reason for this one-slide graph is to hopefully succinctly explain the comment input I have for the multi-year strategic goals, with the hope that one picture will save a thousand words. I know you guys have to say grace over everything from sidewalks to snowplows, but the biggest department of budget you oversee is obviously the schools. And between direct expense and in-kind services, about two-thirds of the budget. The slide in front of you depicts 15-year growth history, some key numbers to focus on. The top line in red represents the Farmington Schools' operating budget trend, so commonly called the superintendent's budget. The bottom line in blue is our pre-K to grade 12 enrollment run rate, which is obviously our student population. Now, if all things stayed equal, the dotted black line would kind of represent everything. But this shows you some trends. Now clustered in between, you'll see a yellow line, which is the CPI inflation rate of growth, which obviously affects all of us. The green line is the GDP measure of economic growth, where most of us make our living and, of course, our valued businesses live. And then the gray line is the Social Security cost of living increases over the years, where your constituents over 62 may live. So you don't have to be too analytical. See, this is a one-chart problem statement, as you can probably see the rapidly widening gap between the student population on the bottom and the superintendent budget on the top. And you can see that about 10 years ago, the school budget growth line kicked up a little bit and accelerated away from the other benchmark indicators. So let me be clear, this slide is not meant to be an indictment of any administrator or board member or council cohort. It's really our shared history. But I think if somebody stood up five or six years ago and said, "Hey, timeout dog on the field," you know, they probably would have been a little bit of a heretic. But today, the issue is not whether our student enrollment goes up or down by a few dozen kids, because we have the seats. Six out of our seven school buildings are under capacity. The point here is, it's really about finding a reasonable way to bend the cost curve so that we have a more sustainable model going forward. And I think that's going to be the track, right, and the challenge. I would recommend the following. On a tactical level, this year, you should ensure that any budget increase does not exceed the ecosystem benchmarks that we all have to live within. This is especially true if you're planning on going to community for a big ask on bonding in the fall. On the strategic level, I think you should launch a joint task force, board and council, you know, town and school, to really focus on finding some new cost-saving measures that can kind of bring this picture, you know, back into balance. So whether it's 10 great small ideas we can execute on, or two big breakthrough innovative things we can do, or maybe both. So at this point, I just think business as usual is probably not the right solution, because that's sort of what got us to the projection we're at here. And, look, I think we can all agree, our school personnel do a great job of teaching the kids and focusing on their social-emotional learning, but, you know, this particular challenge may require some different skill sets. I'm asking that we start working on this as part of our strategic plan process, because in my view, the last five or six years we've been experiencing have kind of been the good old days, right, from an economic standpoint and budgeting as well. Someday, I think the next downturn will hit. And so, you know, we should be prepared. So I appreciate your strategic focus on what's a critical area of importance of Farmington. I'll take any questions on the graph, if there are any.
I think we're good.
Good? Okay.
Yes. Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you, yep.
Any other public comment? Seeing none.
I'd like to add an agenda item for this evening. I'd like to add line item D2, to consider and take action on budget targets for the year 2020, 2021 fiscal year, and consider it before Agenda Item D1.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to add Agenda Item D2, setting a target. Do we have any conversation, any discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Pass unanimously. We've added Item D2. And we will actually skip to Item D2 and start from there. So Kathy, if you could give us...
Yep. The motion to consider and take action on budget targets for 2020 and 2021 fiscal year.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Okay. So in front of you, I have some information. The first backup information is the adopted budget history from fiscal year '95, '96 into 1920. So quite a many years of our budget history. We have five-year expenditure averages and our tax rate history from back from 1995. So in the past, the town council has set budget targets for the town manager and for the Board of Education. At times, the town council has set expenditure targets; at other times, an overall tax rate target was given. For most years, the town council has set a target range, not a specific number. In the past, the town council has provided some general policy direction regarding the budget. All information needed to compile the budget is not available at this time. For example, revenue, state aid, and the grant list are not yet complete. In creating the town manager's recommended budget, there are several factors that I review as we start each budget season. First and foremost, I look to fund accounts at levels that will enable service levels to remain at high standards. Even though it is early in the process, there is information that should be helpful to the town council as they review possible targets. I've listed below anticipated budget drivers for the 2021 budget. The first thing is that I had the cost of living Bureau of Statistics says 2.3 as of December 2019. On the town side, all our contracts are settled, and our wage increases will be close to 2.5%. There is an extra pay period, once every, is it, Joe, 10 or 11 years? Once every 11 years, instead of having 26 pay periods, we have 27 pay periods. Unfortunately, that adds 1.7% to the current budget. So right off the bat, our budget starts at 1.7%. Utilities are projected to increase. The town's pension contribution, which is a significant line item in the budget, is projected to increase because of two factors. The first is the five-year averaging of investment gains and losses, and the second is the actuarial changes to the mortality tables, which we're required to do. Our debt service will be flat. If you look on page, the third page, where it says budget changes last five years, the expenditure category, people that have been on the council before have heard me speak of it often, is that our basic core service is 2.74%. It's really right about that on the average, and even if you go through history and you look for the last 20 years, we're around that. That's maintaining our services. Depending on other factors, that could be adding an employee if we were adding an employee, but mostly, it's not adding any new employees, but it's maintaining services at the levels that we have. With that said, obviously, I have not gone through the budget. We always look for savings and different things that are going to happen. Some of you may know, last year, we did a big streetlight initiative. Our utilities significantly went down. That helps the budget. So things are, we're always looking for savings, we're always going out to bid, so there's some ebbs and flows. But in general, to maintain the service levels we have is about 2.7%. With some additional programs and some, or people, sometimes you're heading closer to 3%. So that's kind of just a guideline. Now, with a 1.7% increase on top of it, no, it's going to be difficult to keep service levels exactly the way they are with that coming off right at the beginning. I haven't gone through everything, I'm not saying it's impossible, but history has shown the information that I have had with the pensions and some different things, that it's going to be difficult to keep 2.7% when 1.7 of that is a piece of payroll that's added on. So that's basically where I am. We're very early on our side of the process right now, so again, we do have, our grant list is coming up, we have the general fund, there's a lot of different factors that will be the overall budget. We're just speaking, I'm just speaking right now mainly to the expenditure side.
Thank you. And we've moved to put this on the agenda this evening, because the Board of Education is actually beginning their discussions this Saturday. So in conversations with them, they appreciated having the number before they actually started trying to figure out what they were going to do with their budget. So that's the reasoning for bringing this on tonight's budget. This evening, I'm going to go start from my left and go down. I'm going to ask everyone to limit their questions to one. Once we get through everyone having a question, then we'll go back for a second round.
I'm sorry, I just wanted to say, also, part of the background information, Brian had asked for the town's financial forecast to be, have it, so that's, everyone has that on their place, too, just so you know.
Gary, when you're ready, if you'd like to start us off with any discussion.
If we maintain, keep maintaining where we are right now, where do we have to stay for a number for our, anyway, with 1.7?
Yep.
To keep us with contractual?
I mean, again, if you're just, if you're just going truly with numbers, you'd take maybe 2.7, and I'd add 1.7% to that for a 3.4%. I mean, again, but that's not saying, you know, we haven't looked at the budget in detail, I haven't seen all the savings, but just historically with numbers, that would be where you would be at. I have some concern because of the bigger items that are also driving this budget is pension, which is a big part of our budget, and also utilities, and that's a big part of our budget, too, and they're both increasing, too. So I think, I think, I think it's going to be extremely difficult to maintain our services. I, yes, we could probably maintain our services, but you're not going to see any expansion or people or anything, and it's going to be difficult to even maintain at, you know, 3.4 would be the number, but that's not saying that, you know, that we're not going to sharpen our pencil and just see what we can do.
Thank you.
Joseph?
I don't really have a question, but I think due to Tuesday's explanation from our Finance Director, Joe, and looking at the history, I think we should try to keep a budget under 3%.
Okay. Peter?
Okay, well, he kind of took one of my questions, but, so I'll ask something different. That 1.7% of the extra payroll period, what's that in dollars, over a million bucks, 1% of the?
What is it, Eric? 500? 500.
570,000.
470.
Oh, 470, an additional payroll.
Yep.
Okay. That was just fact, that will be my question for now, CJ.
Okay.
Chris, sorry.
I forgot, but, I don't know, Joe, I'm going to direct my question to you after what you mentioned Tuesday night. Then I was at the board meeting on Monday night, and our state representatives were there, talking about, you know, transportation agendas at the state level and grant funding, et cetera. And then you mentioned the pensions. You know, the pension issue, obviously, as a member of the Board of Ed, I was concerned about being pushed down, and, you know, with grant funding, I don't know if, could you comment, maybe, or do you have any greater detail of you, what you're hearing in terms of grant funding and pensions that maybe I didn't know about at the Board of Ed, and how that's going to be pushed down to us and impact our potential budget?
Actually, I work too much with anything at the state level on the grant side, and I think just to help the teacher's pension issue is, I think, is one. I don't think that's going to be an issue this year. As I mentioned the other day, we need to tinker with the budget, what you set last year.
Yeah.
I know they should protect the deficit at the end of this year, but I don't think it's a significant deficit. So I'm hoping that wherever they tell us we're going to get last year, we're going to get again this year. They're forecasting us today, that's what I'm doing.
Okay. Okay, thank you. And just as a point of order, if we can ask with direct questions up here, if we need to refer to Joe, we'll...
Okay. Ballast.
Evan?
I guess my question is, are there any other, like, anomalies that we should be aware of in this year's budget besides, like, the extra pay period that you know of, Kathy, and either the town side or the Board of Ed's side?
I wouldn't know on the Board of Education's side, and our side, I don't know, I don't think so. I mean, the one point, the payroll's enough.
Right, yeah.
But other than that, no, I don't think so. Thank you.
Brian?
No questions, just where I would like to see this, in light of the fact that we're trying to take on a new project for a new school or a refurbished school, to make sure that we're able to do a project that's going to be good for the town, I'm concerned about having too high a goal, because I think, I want to make sure that the town is comfortable with our efforts to keep costs down while we take on additional costs. So I think if we're going to be setting budgets and goals, the goal should be a little lower, not tremendously lower, because we obviously have some obligations that we need to take care of. And we should be asking folks to look at how we can tighten belts a little bit when we have more obligations to make in this one, in this one budget. So I would like us to consider being a little lean on our projections, a little lean, without being ridiculous about, because we have to be realistic and meet obligations.
Thank you. Second round. Any additional comments? Gary, no? Joe?
No, sir.
Peter?
Not yet.
Okay.
I'm all set, thank you.
I'm all set.
I'm good, thank you.
Okay. You guys are a very efficient group here. I like that. Well, why don't we get an idea of what types of numbers? I heard Joe say something under three, I'd like to see under three, kind of based on facts we had before. Could we get any ideas on that number? Something, making a recommendation of under three. Gary, any thoughts on that?
I think if we can come in a little under three, I mean, I think it's going to help us with everything else down the road. It's like you were saying, we have to be tight this year. If we're going to undertake a big project, we're going to have to watch our dollars, especially for this, this year.
Sure. Peter?
Yeah, if we're going to use the threshold of below 3% as a starting point, I would be in favor of that. It sets, I think, a good tone that we are going, we're taking on a potentially very huge project for this town, and it shows that we are serious about tightening up and doing what we need to do to still keep the town running responsibly.
Chris?
I would echo the same comments in light of the, you know, the approval of the new project last night at the Building Committee. The proper message is sent to town is a good message of fiscal responsibility, and I would support target under three.
Yeah, I would, I would agree. I'd also support a target under three. We know we have the additional pay period, so that's probably kind of as realistic as we can get in trying to be a little fiscally conservative in setting a budget, knowing that we have this big high school project that's going to be coming to referendum not too far down the road.
Right. Brian?
I am in agreement with, that would should be under three. Should we strive for a little lower? I would like to, but that's how we get the best results and get ourselves as close as we can to an acceptable budget that would leave room for, you know, taking out of school in some form.
Okay. I think we've had a consensus. I'll ask in a minute, just one comment. With the extra pay period, if we look at this in a reality situation, you're adding 1.7% to the budget with the pay period. 3% is then a 1.3% increase plus that 1.7. So the way I'm viewing it right now is, if we're looking at under 3%, we're looking at a budget increase without that 1.7 of 1.3%, which is significantly better than we've had on our averages in most years, so...
Just one thing is that, as you've said, that that's really what the budget increase is going to be on the town side, and what I've historically have done is that I like to, Matt, meet the targets that the council has come up with. So I will make sure that we are under 3%, but I will do a running list of things that you are not going to see. And it's worked, it works out very well, because we're going to do the strategic plan next with all the goals, and the goals cost money. And so it will be helpful that you now know what the target is.
Great.
And I'll leave a thing, but just so we're all clear that with that kind, I mean, and I appreciate the target, is that, you know, you're not, we're going to have no new initiatives, no new people in this budget, absolutely. I can guarantee that because of that payroll.
Thank you. Okay. Do I have a motion?
Yes, I'll make a motion. I'd like to make a motion to set the town budget expenditure for a target of under 3% for both the town and the Board of Education.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The recommendation passes unanimously. We will now move on to Item D1.
Agenda Item D1, to consider and approve the attached 2020-2022 Town of Farmington Strategic Plan Town Managers' Goals. I'll second.
Discussion.
Eric, are you going to put that on the screen? Thanks. All right. Couple of things. In your pack, on your places, you have a page, an extra page, so when I get to it, we'll pull that page. Brian, that's your goal, so I added that for you. So that's the goal, okay? So I want to do that. If everyone, they all have the document, I apologize that they're not page numbered, but it was because we kept on changing it and the numbers, but we'll start on the first page with the goals. In the red, it's goal number 2.2 on transportation. I thought what we would do is that I'd just go through the goals, each one of them. I'd give up pretty much some detail to them, and we do them, we just go through them all, obviously ask some questions as we go along. As you can see, there's a chart under each goal, too. I figured we won't talk about the chart until we come back around, but what the chart is, is that it's a timeframe, a cost, a complexity of the goal or the policy, the staff workload, and the town council workload. So under each goal, you have red, yellow, and green, and it will show the timeframe, the cost, the complexity, and the workload. So I think once we go through all the goals once, then we can maybe start looking at what's immediate, what's, what's not, and what's the cost, and we can go from there. So does that work for you?
That sounds good.
Okay. All right. So the first goal is, it's actually a goal modification. So the goal used to be, was to appoint the Farmington Center Committee as soon as possible. And if you remember, these are two-year goals, so we have, we had a center committee, we also charged that committee, that was another goal. So this was the original one. And I'm suggesting a goal modification to this, and my goal modification is to establish a town council ad hoc committee to work with town staff to make recommendations to the town council on the following. The future use of Parsons' property, the environmental liability associated with the ownership of Parsons' property, the phasing portion of the BSC Streetscape Improvement Plan, and the selection of a preferred developer of the Parsons' property. So our Farmington Village Committee has been working for the last couple of years, and they've basically completed their charge, other than the selection of the preferred developer. That's where it has been left off. The rest, we've been having updates, and there's a lot going on about the use of the property, the liability, and we've been charged from the past council, is that the council has directed the town staff that they feel, and we've had public meetings and different things, that, that there is a priority or that the council would like ownership of that Parsons' property. They think it's in our best interest for the town to own the property. That said, they feel that we environmentally need to know what's on that property before we would take ownership for it. So at this point in time, we are, we've been working diligently to try, to try to find out what the, excuse me, what the environmental liability is on the property. And this is a difficult task, because we're working with the state of Connecticut, and there's a lot that goes along with it. So it's really not committee-based, it's really staff-based, but I really feel that council needs to, an ad hoc committee, be in the loop about this, to know what's going on and keep the rest of the council involved. The next thing is, again, with the liability, and like, what the next steps are going to be, what the funding is going to be to pay for the liability, and so there's a lot that has to go with this, and a lot to get everyone around this table up to speed on it. The next thing is the phasing portion of the Streetscape Improvement Plan, and this again goes to a budgetary item, is that we've approved a Farmington Village plan that has sidewalks, basically up and down Route 10. It's a great plan, and we've approved it. We have to fund it, and so this is going to go into the budget time, and how much are we going to fund, and the grant funding that goes along with it. And also, because unless, again, depending on what happens in this upcoming budget, you're going to fund the entire amount, which I'd love that you would do that, but I'm not sure if that's practical, we need to implement how we're going to phase it, and that's not that easy. And so I think that a subcommittee working with the staff would be helpful on that. And then the selection of the preferred developer, I see that is that this committee, I'm not saying that the Farmington Village Committee wouldn't do it, it may say that the Farmington Village Committee is still doing it, it's just it's not. Right now, we're out for RFPs for developers for the property, but it's due on Friday, our developers. We have not received any interest for it, and I think part of the issue is not about the desirability of it, it's about there's too many unknowns about the property, that developers aren't going to spend a lot of money giving us a proposal when they don't know what the environmental issues are. They don't know what the cost is, they don't know, there's a lot of things. And so, again, I think that an ad hoc committee to work together with the staff and kind of get everyone up to speed and make sure I'm clear on the, this new council's policy direction on where we're going on these topics. So that's, that's what this is.
Any questions on that?
I do have a question, and Cap, because you know I'm on the, on the committee as it stands right now. Are we talking about an additional committee? Because you said that we, it may not be that.
I, I don't, again, I think that's up to the council, I mean, the committee is created. I see this as a little subcommittee, while this Farmington Village Committee is just still dormant for a little while.
Right.
And then we just decide what we're going to do.
Sure.
So I think that we have the committee established, if the council decides that they're going to be the group, which was the original charge, to help vet the selected thing, I think that's a fine idea. I have no problem with that.
I know this is about goals, I just think, since we have a committee that's been working on it for a couple of years, to have those existing members create a subcommittee with people who are very familiar with the project makes, I think, good sense.
Right.
You may want to have some additional people on there, I'm not sure, but... You may want to have some additional people on there. I'm not sure, but.
Yeah, I think.
We should have representation from the existing committee at least.
That's a council. I, I think that most of the, most of the topics, other than the selection of the developer, to me seems to be policy decisions of the council.
Mm-hmm.
And then, I think that with you being, being on the village committee is helpful, too, so you can have the background. Like I said, I don't see getting rid of any of the village, not having the village committee. I just think that we need to convene a group so we can talk about policy decisions with the council.
And this is, this is goals.
Right.
So, I don't want to.
Yeah.
Take us off topic. Sorry.
Okay, no problem.
So, your thinking on this is to have a subcommittee from the council of which, you know, Brian may well be part of it since he's been involved in all that, with one or two, maybe one other council member?
Yep.
Okay.
And really, the whole purpose is, is that this is a huge undertaking. It's a huge decision-making. And this is a brand-new council. And I need to make sure that we're all on the same page of what, where we're driving.
Yeah, that's great. I just wanted to clarify. So, that's, and that falls within this goal right here, so we don't have to have that discussion right now. We can create that subcommittee without putting it in the goals?
No, this is, this is the goal.
Okay.
This is the goal right here.
Great. Okay.
Yep.
In looking at this, and you said, no objection to it, but the selection of preferred developer, but maintenance of that property is potentially, open space still exists or no, or?
Right now, it's not charged for open space.
Oh, it's not? Okay.
But, it, but again, if there's no developer that's interested in it, and this, again, trying to see what this council is, is that, we have, we've been, basically, the thought is, if you go through all the studies and that's getting kind of the council lull up to speed, the thought was is that, you know, it would have a little mini development there. And that's what we're looking for the developers to do.
Yeah, okay, great. Yep.
Yep.
And just one thing, but the state still owns the property currently?
Yes, yes. But, we have the right of first refusal.
For refusal, right.
But, the problem is, is that we can't determine what the environmental issues are because the state won't give us their reports.
Very cooperative. Okay.
CJ?
Thanks. Kathy, was there a, like a Phase 1 environmental study done?
Yeah. There, there was Phase, the state did, and I misspoke. The state has given us reports, but they won't certify the reports. And, and you have to have certified reports to meet, buy the property for the DEP. So, the DOT, when they clean the property for the road, they don't have to follow the same standard as a developer or a town has to. So, they don't have to follow the same standard. We have to get certification that the property is clean, which the DOT has told us it is clean. But, because they don't have to follow the same standard and they have to get certification, they won't certify that it's clean. So, now we have to go on the property to prove that the property is actually clean. And so, now we're in the process of trying to get on the property. To answer your question, they did Phase 1s, they've done Phase 2s, and we have all that document. And we're trying to line it all up and make sure, but we have to actually verify it. And that's the biggest thing, that what our issue is right now. We actually physically have to go on the property to do that.
So, is that?
Oh, sorry.
Sorry. I was just going to say, so is that doing another environmental, hiring a company to do another environmental study, but on our behalf to verify the results of these other?
Exactly.
Okay, got you.
So, did they literally do the physical testing, pulling the samples or however, whatever, whatever sampling they did? And it, and then they analyzed the sampling and put it in a report, but they won't certify it? So, we have to certify their sampling?
Right.
Okay, so if we just took their results and analyzed the data, that would pass or fail?
Fail, because it's only on paper. And so, we have to actually prove. And they don't, what it is, is that you have to have a licensed professional sign off that your paperwork is accurate based on certain standards. The state doesn't have to do that. So, they can give us all their information, but we won't, there's no licensed professional that will sign off on another person's work.
Yeah, I get that.
So, we have to hire our own licensed professional to actually verify what was done on that property. And that's based on the DEEP standards. And that is also because this property is a transfer site, and that brings you into another environmental category.
Yeah. Okay, I'm a little speechless on that, but.
[laughing]
I mean, they do the study and that, they won't certify it. They have the qualified staff, but they still don't want to certify it. But, now you want, they want us to go out and, and re, rechart the whole area with testing, drilling, you name it.
Yes.
And pay for all that. So, everything they did is pretty much moot.
Right. But, that, you are correct. But, to, but one of the things that I've come to understand is that because they don't have to meet the same standards that we ha, that we have to meet, they don't want to sign anything because their standard is different. And then, they've opened themselves up to a huge amount of liability because they're not following the same standards. The issue is, is they should follow the stand, same standards, and then, then they could sign off on it. But, they're not required to follow the same standards. So, even though they've said they've done certain things, we're not 100% sure they actually did. And we're not 100% sure if all the standards are the same.
Okay. So, everyone in the, everyone has to adhere to their standards except themselves?
Right.
Okay.
Yeah.
Next. Okay.
You've got it.
Any other comments? This might be a good time to remind the council that our state representatives will be joining us next month.
Yeah. And this is not uncommon with Farmington. It's a huge issue with developers. And trying to buy property from the DOT is very, very difficult. And it's a, it's an issue between the DOT and the DEP. It's, it's very, very difficult. The next goal is on 2.2, and it's a new goal. And it's to review affordable housing goals, workforce housing goals, and present deliverables and strategies for the town council consideration. Provide quarterly reports to the town council. This was a goal that our town planner before and our town planner now, if you know that we are on a workforce or affordable housing moratorium, and we need to start looking at that. And there, I think there's legislation coming up now that basically the state is saying that if you have not met your affordable workhouse housing goals, then you're not going to be getting different types of funding and some different things like that. So, there is like some different strategies that we've been working on. So, I think this is something that we should be looking at. We do actually, in comparison to kind of light communities, are, I think it's 10% is the goal, and we're close to 8%, which if you look at some of our communities around us, we're, we're doing pretty well. We have been very supportive of workforce and affordable types of housing for a long time. But, we also, the one thing that's the problem, and again, it's not that the Town of Farmington is against affordable types of housing goals. Again, our state representatives, is that what happens is, is that if a developer comes in on a piece of property and they, we, we, they want to, we want to follow our zoning rules. And our zoning rules say X, Y and Z. And they say they are not going to follow our zoning rules, but instead, they're going to put in affordable housing. They are allowed to put in the affordable housing, and they don't have to follow any of our zoning rules. It's a statute. And if you, if anyone knows Snowberry Cobble, this is a perfect example of it. And the problem is, is that the burden is on the municipalities, but the municipalities can't win. And so, this is all about a state law that we would prefer, we don't, we want it, we want the housing, but we want them, the housing to follow our rules and to fit into our zoning rules and not supersede them. And how the state has it worked, it's completely the opposite. So, we're kind of in the situation with the developer where the developer says, well, if you don't do what I want to do on certain things like that, I'm going to use the 830 law, and I'm going to put in the housing the way I want to. And if you take me to court, you're going to lose. And we did. And Snowberry Cobble is the perfect example. And so, this is a big topic. And so, I think we should be looking at creative, different ways about workforce housing.
Mm-hmm.
So, that's what this is. The next goal is manage actions taken to improve traffic problems, meeting with the state Connecticut Department of Transportation on a quarterly basis and report back. We are one of the few municipalities in the state that have a quarterly meeting with the top brass at the DOT. We meet with them on a quarterly basis to make sure our projects are in the limelight, that we know what's going on. As you know, traffic is our number-one quality-of-life issue here in town. And so, we do that. The other thing is, what we usually do is list our projects. We, our director of Public Works, town engineer, Russ Arnold, receives a tremendous amount of state funding for transportation. We've been able to do quite a few projects. And we usually list them here. We have a new project, not a new project, a project that's still on there, is to conduct and review options for a post-construction traffic study. What that is, is Route 4. And Edward, you probably remember because you asked for this last time around, last year, is that once the Route 4 project was done, the question is now, we've, that we should go back out and do some traffic studies and some flow studies and see if there's more improvements that need to be made, which, are we able to make them? And also, what's the volume of traffic compared to what it was when the traffic studies were done originally and when the project? So, that's, but we couldn't do that until the traffic flow was normal on the road, like after people got used to the project. And then, we also had some issues because Avon did a significant road job on, what one, Eric?
On Waterville and, we're not Toulon City, but.
Old Farm Road. And that's, if you know, everyone was, everyone was being, just going down Route 4 because of it. So, it really, we couldn't do this traffic study because it would have been skewed because everyone was driving on it and things like that. But, this is something that we're also going to, we're going to do. It costs some money, but we have grants and things like that. But, also, one of the big things about the Route 4 project was, is about the lights and the timing of the lights and how the lights work. And the, the traffic going into town was never supposed to work 100%. It was always, you know, that was just because we didn't have an extra lane. But, the lights were supposed to work, the timing, that you would have a flow of traffic that was working. And most people around this table will probably tell you that, that they don't believe that's happening. And I'm one of them that doesn't believe that that's happening correctly. The state has told us the reason why it's not working correctly is because when the, when the project was first on the docket, it was a lot less traffic. I, I have to see if that, I don't believe that. So, we are, this is part of this traffic post-construction, is to really study what's going on with those lights. I don't feel that they're working correctly. And so, that's where we are on that one. So, that's that. And the next goal is our LAPSIP. It hasn't have a number yet. And this is Project South Road and Route 6, there's going to be a roundabout. And that's a state-funded project. And so, that's one that's going to be up there. The next goal is no changes on this, is something that we've looked at is, and continue to, is to continue to evaluate the potential and location of an additional river crossing with the state of Connecticut Department of Transportation to alleviate traffic in the town centers. I'm not sure if it was the last council or the one council before. We have come up with a plan, and we have all our data. We've had all our studies done. We have a place for the bridge. We are just waiting at this point in time for funding to open up for a design of, to, we are looking for the state to help us pay for the design of a third bridge. We have our application ready. We have everything, everything done. So, that's where we are with that. But, I think it should stay on the docket, that we have that.
True.
The next goal on 2.4 is a goal modification. We do, as you all know, have a bike committee. So, this goal is to ensure that the bike advisory committee develops new goals for town council consideration for the 2021 year in conjunction with town departments. The bike committee does a great job for us, but I don't feel that they have enough structure, that they need some goals. And also, I think it needs to be in conjunction with the town departments and then also what the cost of these goals are going to be. So, that's what the modification of that goal is. And last year, they, again, just so you can see, is that they did do some sharrows and three roads with them. And we did, we did complete that goal. The next goal is to ensure an ad hoc town council subcommittee to work with town staff to review 169 streets and sidewalks and to make recommendations for any modifications to the ordinance, to the town council for approval. This is, this is a goal with our streets and sidewalks, about where we're putting our sidewalks, what our rules are with the sidewalks. Is there any updates that want to be made? This is, as, and we'll talk about it later on, this is a really, really complex issue. People that are new to town government probably don't realize it, but it's, it's very, very complex. And we have an ordinance that has, that needs review. And it's something that, you know, we've been, you know, with the Main Street sidewalks, and we've done some Unionville sidewalks, and who maintains the sidewalks? And are we putting any new sidewalks on? And who's going to maintain the new sidewalks? And what's the dollar cost for those types of things? So, I think this is a, a committee that needs to be established. The next goal is on 2.7, and that's a goal modification. And this is the water pollution control plant. And the goal would be to close out all remaining financial aspects of the comprehensive upgrade to the wastewater treatment plant and develop the share of the project cost that each of the participating towns, Avon, Burlington, Canton and Farmington and the University of Connecticut must pay over the next 20 years. So, that project is basically done. And now we're just looking to firm up our agreements with our other towns for their costs. To create an ad hoc committee, determine what future infrastructure committee will focus on. And that was a completed goal, so that's why I took that, took that out. The next goal is to provide the needed support to ensure that the Farmington High School Building Committee, before, when we did this, we had two ad hoc committees. That was the ad hoc committees that we worked on over the summer. One was a survey committee and one was a financial committee. And so, now we're hot and heavy with the high school building committee. This is something on 2.7 that I mentioned at the la, I think the first meeting, is that to approve the fire department statement and needs and establish a fire station building committee to complete the statement and needs. We've had two studies done. It's in our budget that the fire departments need to be renovated. They need, so this is something that we would start a new building committee. We'd approve their statement of needs and get a fire station building committee. So, that's, that's on the plan. The next goal on 2.8 is to work with the Farmington Cemetery Committee? Excuse me. Lot of goals.
Slow down.
Okay. Cemetery Committee. One of the things is, is that towns, we have on Garden Street is a town cemetery. They're running out of space. So, if we want to have a new, keep a cemetery in town, we need to find land for them. We've been working for years on this. So, this is something that I think should stay on the, on the docket.
Has there been any, anything on the horizon on this?
Yes. Um, where we.
That you could speak of?
Hmm. We, we had put in the Tinty Farm, which came out very poorly for us, and the neighbors really liked it. And we pushed that aside. That was a couple of years ago. And now, we're looking at various properties. And we do have something, a plant, one place that has the potential, but we're doing some testing on it right now for water to see, because it is a cemetery, how wet it is. So, that's where we are with that. Subbage Farm is our farm. We usually provide a yearly report. I just think that that's something that we could move to the Assistant Town Manager Goals. 2.8, to provide the needed support for the land acquisition committee. This is a existing goal. We have a land acquisition committee. And I suggest that we have, keep the land acquisition committee. This one, if you can go to your handout here, the first goal is to provide the needed support for Yukon. That's the same goal. We meet twice a year at Yukon, just to see what's going on with them, what's going on with us. And we just do a yearly report for the town council. The new goal, this is, Brian, and again, I'm more than happy to make any modifications, but this is what we talked about last time. And I wrote, to create a town council ad hoc subcommittee with town staff to explore various quality-of-life features that enhances a sense of place for millennials and report to the town council on a quarterly basis. So, I thought, Brian, I hope that, I was hoping that captured.
That does encapsulate it, absolutely.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you.
So, that's what that goal was. All right. If you go back, now we're on 3.3. These are, now we're in the economic development goals. And it's that the town council actively participates in regional state economic developments, activities and provides quarterly reports. This is really a, very much like a staffing goal for Rose Ponti. And she spends a lot of her time participating in activities. Our next goal, 3.4, is a goal that CJ has talked about. And that's exploring partnerships with the Farmington Trails Council, neighboring towns and the business community. with the Farmington Trails Council, neighboring towns, and the business community to research opportunities that will enhance the trail experience and support local businesses, um, and report quarterly, um, to the town council on any recommendations, including long-term and short-term cost. A new goal on economic development that came from CJ was, is to continue to use Explore Farmington to increase engagement with town residents and local businesses with the goal of increasing users and improving the user experience, report to the town council. I don't know if, uh, everyone is on Explore Farmington, but it's a great site for everyone, um, and I would suggest if you're not, uh, get on it. The next one is in budget, and this is a goal that, obviously, it's, uh, to prepare and present our annual, uh, budget, which starts now and it will go until May. Um, the next goal is, has to do with, um, our unions and, uh, collective bargaining agreements. We are done with all our union negotiations this year, so, and we, so that's complete, so I took that off. A new goal is to create a town council ad hoc subcommittee to recommend, recommend a policy to the town council establishing where the employer matching contributions for the Farmington Public Schools Non-Certified Staff Defined Contribution Plan will be budgeted each year. Some of you may or may not know, so, um, as the town, uh, most of their employees are, have moved from a, a traditional defined benefit into a, uh, a traditional, uh, I mean, into a 401. And now, the school system, their non-certified people are doing the same thing. The town, historically, has paid the portion of the pension of the employees on the Board of Education side, it's in our budget, and now the question is, is the, when they now go, and you have to, it's like a 401, which you're probably more familiar with, the town or the board will contribute 6%, 8%, whatever that number is, and the employee matches it. That money, who's paying that money? Traditionally, the town has paid for the board's side. Um, last year, when this had come up, we really didn't know, we didn't wanna have a, um, a debate or, uh, about it, and it really needed to be studied, so what we did is that on our first page of our budget document, we put it there, and so neither one of us paid it. It came, it just was, um, on the front page of the budget. We really need to decide moving forward where it's going to be, and so, that's where, it would be a subcommittee of Board of Ed members and town council members. This is continue the outreach of citizens and volunteer groups to promote, um, contributions. I think that this is absolutely something, I'm crossing it out, but I'm saying it's moving, it's not gonna be a goal, I think it should be a desired outcome, we always do that, and so it's not really necessarily a goal, so if you flip the page over to 4.5, you'll see I just moved it over there. That's something we always strive to do. 4.3 is a, a new goal. This is to establish an ad hoc committee to review Article 5, uh, I mean, 4, property tax relief for elderly homeowners, a local option, and Article 6, property tax relief for volunteer firefighters, and Article 7 for elderly tax release program of Chapter 176 Taxation of the Code of the Town of Farmington for the purposes of determining whether there is a need for ordinance changes. We have some, uh, tax relief programs, um, for the elderly and for volunteer firefighters, and they're all in Chapter 176. I had thought that, we have not reviewed what that abatement is, and, um, it seems like this may be a good dime to look at it, when you're looking at one of the big things that people talk about, residents talk about, the elderly talk about, is that when you're doing such a large project, potentially like a school project, that potentially, we should probably be looking at the elderly on the ordinance side to see if there's any modifications we could make to them. The other issue is that volunteer service for firefighters, it's a, a huge time commitment, and a lot that goes with being a volunteer firefighter. There may be, and we are struggling, to an extent, to keep our volunteers, um, that they have an abatement while we're looking at it, maybe we should look at that too. And I'm not suggesting one way or another what the changes would be, but I think that right now would be a good time to do that. So, that's where that goal is. Meet with our, um, Farmington delegation, which we're doing next month, so we do that on a yearly basis. Uh, the red 4.5 I talked about, best practices, this is a standing goal, um, is that part of, and, cause that, again, this is our strategic plan, town manager's goal, you know, a very, very large part of my job is just managing the departments, that's what I do. So that's really what that goal is, is that I'm managing all the departments. I also, one of the goals is that I provide you with a yearly report on all these goals and objectives, and making sure that we're, um, completing them and going there, so that's a yearly report. The next goal was to continue to recruit and sustain a volunteer workforce for the volunteer company, again, going back to how to, um, uh, recruit for more volunteers. One of the things from last year had come out, what I just talked about, is looking at the abatement, but I think that this should move off the main goals and move to the fire director goals. So it's not going away, it's just moving to the fire director goals. Appoint an ad hoc committee to review auditors, we did that last time, and, so that's complete. At the last council meeting, you guys had tabled our legal service, this would be, to be established, a town council ad hoc legal service committee to go out to bid for our legal services. So that's what that is. The next goal I crossed out, but it's not necessarily crossed out, it's just one of the police chief's goal, it's to work in collaboration with the superintendent of schools to focus on the, address the safety and security in around Farmington school systems. Uh, one of the things why it was on the goals is that we, um, did some restructuring in our police department to have a, a higher level person overseeing, um, the, the school, uh, sec, not the school security, the school, um, resource officers, and we did some restructuring, and that's why it was here on the goals, but we always do that, I think it could move to the police department's goal, the chief's goal. Uh, the next one is to appoint a working group to determine, um, communications and transparency, that was complete, and I moved a desired outcome to 5.91, if you wanna flip a couple of pages. And I put that on the desired outcome, because I think that's something we always do, is continually strive to improve communication and transparency with residents in all areas of government. That's on the 5.91 on the left-hand side. So that's, so I took it here and just put it as a desired outcome. The next goal is a, a goal to provide you with, uh, town council with, uh, information pol, and for each town council meeting, again, a very, uh, large part of my position, and what I do is this, the agendas and things that go along with that, so I feel that should be our goal. On 5.8, uh, this is our green efforts goal, so, again, um, this is our committee for green efforts, so I think that, uh, we should continue with that goal, and that committee, so I put that on. The next goal is to increase efforts to provide enhancement for the community events, that's Nancy, uh,'s goal, I'm not saying to get rid of that goal, I'm just saying to move it to the recreation, um, to her, her individual goals. The next one underneath 6.4 is to establish a comprehensive 10-year facility improvement plan for Tungusas Meat Park. The plan shall establish what major improvement projects should be undertaken over the next 10 years with associated project schedules and costs. Tungusas Meat is a wonderful facility, um, we have, um, we, when we were doing the budgets and some different things, we've come to the conclusion really that we need a, just a, a long-term facility, a pr, um, improvement plan for it that's written and a little bit more, uh, detailed than what we have right now, so, that's something I feel that should be on the plan. CJ has a goal on the next goal on 6.6, and this is to research best practices in conjunction with the Farmington Trails Council and neighbor town and the business community regarding the addition of potential bathroom facilities, i.e. temporary and/or permanent on the rails-to-trail system, and make recommendations based on research, including long and ter, short-term costs to the town council, provide quarterly reports to the town council. And, that's it.
Okay, now you'll go through and give us your scoring?
Yes. So let's, I think what we should do is that, one of the things, let's, if we look at our chart, I will tell you what I did. There's a couple of nuances, but I did not put anything as a timeframe, I don't think is a green, which is 12 to 24 months. I didn't feel that was my, my position to do that, to push something out, um, so, I, I think these are really aggressive goals, I think there's a lot of stuff in that here, so, um, I think that, when we talk about this, if there is something, we consider these two-year goals, if there's something that potentially we can do in the second year of this, that we should think about it. But I will tell you, I did not put anything as, uh, as that, because I really feel that's a policy decision. The other thing, when we go through, I just want, will make note of, is that I did write some goals, there was red for timeframe, for instance, um, but it didn't necessarily mean red and the workload was big. For instance, we had a Yukon Subcommittee meeting yesterday, or two day, last week, whatever it was, CJ and I, and that's one of our goals. So, the timeframe is immediate, because we just had it, but we don't have another one for another six months. So, it's red, but it's really not that, it's not a difficult goal. So, again, that, the other thing is with cost. I put, um, the cost, a lot of these things, I didn't put that there was a potentially high cost on these ad hoc committees, because having the committee is not necessarily costly. That doesn't mean what the outcome of the ad hoc committee could very much be costly. So I think that we should talk about that, if, you know, for instance, the sidewalk goal. Studying the sidewalk goal, it's costly in time for the staff, because it's very complex, and you'll see a red for that. It doesn't cost anything right now, just to meet and talk about it, but if you guys all decided to change up your policy on it, that potentially could be very, very costly. So, again, charts work to an extent, but there's a lot of nuances that go with it. So...
So if you take us through this, and we'll look at the, the reds in particular, some of the reds, as you point out, will be red, uh, for timeframe and green throughout, it doesn't take a lot of time, effort, or money, uh, relatively. Also, uh, when we're looking at the reds that are red throughout, we certainly can't do all of those this year, and if we did, we'd have nothing to do next year. So, we have to try...
Job security, right?
Yeah, we have to try and move some of those reds out, so we're doing them to the 12 to 24-month period. So, right now, you'll go through and give us some guidance on that?
Right, so the first one is the Parsons property. This one is, is a tough, it's a, it's a difficult goal. The timing is now, we're working on it, the staff workload is very high, and if you put, um, the council and the ad hoc committee, I would expect that the council workload is gonna be medium too, um, you're gonna do that. I think that this should stay there, my opinion, it's a top issue, and I think that this goal, I, I would say it's a pri, I would, what am I, a priority one, in my mind. Maybe I'll do it like that.
Yep.
Priority, a priority one, at least in my mind.
Yeah, I would agree with that, I think, uh, that's an ongoing pending issue, uh, we have to get right on the testing, and that's gonna be a matter of when we get availability that we can do the testing, so I think that does stay at the front of the list.
The next, the next one, um, the, the affordable housing goal, that one, I think it's, I think it's in the right spot. It's, it's, it's complicated, and it's gonna take some staff time, but it doesn't have to be done immediately. It's a three-to-month, three-to-12-month, so, I think, I think that can fit in still as a priority one, um, and keep it where it is. I, I don't have any, I, I think that's fine.
Don't overtax your staff, you're okay with that?
No, I, I think this is, I think this is important to really look at, especially since we've seen some new legislation on it.
Yep.
Potentially. Uh, so that's a priority one. The next project is the state, and, again, in, in the whole scheme of the last 10 years, this goal is actually much less than it ever, ever has been. So, I think that it's fine, it's, it's three-to-12 months, we're working on projects, and I think that this is, this is, and it's a low town council, medium staff, and I think we're in a good spot with this goal too.
What's the likelihood of us actually moving forward in, in that three-to-12-month timeframe?
I, well, it's gonna get a number, Russ is gonna be designing, the tra, traffic study's gonna be happening, yeah.
Okay.
Yep, this is all gonna be happening. And we want the traffic study, I think that's...
Yes.
It's just, I, I don't put anything in immediate when I deal with the state, so that's why I put it in three-to-six, you know, the three-to-12 months, but it really, that traffic study is really something that we're looking to get done. The potential of the river, I think that's a, I think that's timing, we have everything done, um, there's no more money right now, um, if it does happen, this is a very complex issue, you know, where are you gonna put a bridge, how you're gonna do land, you know, it's very, very complex. But right now, we're kind of in a holding pattern, so I think it's fine, just where it is, and I think it's okay. And I, I think we always should keep it on the radar. Bike committee, um, bike committee is, they need goals, it's, it's, it's not non-staff, you know, there is some staff, they have to come to committee meetings, but it's not, um, it's not like the Farmington High School Committee, so, you know, so I think that's fine, I think we have support of our bicycle committee, so I think we're, it doesn't cost that much, and the staff is medium, so I think that's, I think it's fine, priority The subcommittee on, uh, streets and sidewalks. You know, this is one, I think definitely three-to-12 months. So, again, this is a policy decision, this is a, definitely a topic that keeps on coming up, and it has to be addressed. It has, we have to look at this ordinance, we have to look at how we're doing things, it's a topic for people. I don't think we have the capacity to put it as a red right now, because we just have too much going on. I, I think that in the yellow, but honestly, I think in the yellow, you're pushing that yellow out in the eight-to-12 months.
So it's a yellow and a half?
Yes.
Okay. What does yellow and green together make? Mauve?
Brown.
So, as long as people understand, I just, I think this is, this is coming in, like, maybe, like, coming further out.
Yep.
Okay. All right. The water pollution control, closeout for that one, the timing is happening now, in red, we're doing it. There could be some potential for money there, because we're working with different towns, and we're trying to get, uh, do some different things, so there'll be some money. Hopefully, it's not too complex, but again, asking different towns with different agreements and different things can be somewhat complex, and we have some staff time that goes with it, but I would keep it on the, I would keep it in the, the immediate. High school committee, as if you can see on that one, honestly, that's, that's all red, and it's, and you all know it, that's what we're doing right now, it's...
Can you go dark red?
So we're not, we're not shifting that meeting to February 6th, 2020, you're saying?
Right, yeah, it's, everything about it is red. Okay, so that's that one. This one, statement of needs, fire department. The fire department has been, they have two studies, they've been waiting, they're ready to go, establishing another committee, if you ask them, they'd want this to be a red, they'd want you to set up the committee next month. I, I don't think we have the capacity to do that in the next month or so, maybe start getting ready, you know?
Basically, your yellows put us just past the budget, it doesn't look like we can pile this on top of anything while we're in the middle of the, the high school and the budget right now.
Right. Uh, you will get pushback with this, you will get pushback, they're ready to go, so...
Is this, is this just one of the buildings, or all of the buildings? All of the buildings, okay.
All of the buildings.
So this is a big piece, I mean, that's a good question, because it's...
Yeah, it is a big piece.
It's not gonna be an easy conversation, there's, uh, there's a lot to be done, so...
The three main stations.
Three main stations, okay.
So, maybe June?
I, I would say into the summer, yeah, something like that, I think that would be good, uh, after we get through the budget...
Yeah.
And things like that. I think there'll be, and again, we haven't done the budget yet, but as you remember with the high school, if you, to get started, you need fees for architects and things like that, that would be in the budget you're gonna be discussing. I think the fire department, as long as you guys, and again, we haven't done the capital budget, we're doing that at the end of the month, I do have money to get them started, and so, I think, you know, so, Bill, I think that will, they'll know that there's support for it, and things of that nature, um, it's been in the plan.
It's on the list, it's, it's coming in the near future, so hopefully there's comfort.
And, yeah, and there's gonna, again, be funding, because it's a, what do we, is it a, it's $9 million?
Nine to 11, depending.
And so, you know, it's a big, it's a capital expenditure to get architects and things like that, so... Cemetery is, uh, yellow, this is, this is somewhat complex, because where you find land and things of that nature, um, staff time is medium, town council not, not so much, I think it's fine where it is, we're not, we're not able to test, there... I think it's fine where it is, we're not, we're not able to test, they're, they're not running out of property for the cemetery in the next year, so it's, it's just a never, kind of just keep on working on it.
You say it's light town council, but I think Ed will back me up on this. Once you recommend a site, we tend to get a lot of phone calls about those sites.
Absolutely.
All right. The next one is the land acquisition. Here's one, again, where I put it as a red, again, because you, you're doing it now, it's not, it's so, but it's not really red, like, but it's all part of your workload. So again, I would rec, I think it's fine, we could, you know, with the understanding of that. The goal, this is the Yukon one, again, it's green, but it has a red at the beginning because we just had a meeting. If we go back to Brian's goal on this page, this goal is yellow because it's going to be a Subcommittee. It's not expensive to do it right now, it may be expensive depending on what the solutions are, that's one of the examples. It's medium. I, I think it's, I think it's a neat goal. I, again, these, this would, this is, this is a kind of a new initiative, I have it as a yellow. Maybe we can get through everything else and you can see where we are at the end with some of these new initiatives in yellow to see, but I, I think it's a great goal, and it's not, it's not terribly expensive, and it's not terribly staff, with the staff, so. The regional activities, it's, this is a, a goal that's a low impact for the council and money, but it's, it's something that's, it's very much on Rose's, Rose, that's a lot of Rose's job, she spends a lot of her time doing these things, which is very good for the Town of Farmington. So that's why the timing of it is meaning that she does spend immediate, she does it, it's part of her job. Our Explore Partnerships with the Trails Council, and this is again with Rose. One of the things, there's a couple of new Rose's goals to talk about, I have this as a yellow, it's a yellow staff time. Rose is a one-woman show, she does get support from my office, but I think we just have to be, make sure that we're using her time the best that we, that we should be. So something again, maybe to talk about.
That could be a flexible yellow, that could be a yellow and a half, I'm okay with that.
Yeah, something along those lines. This is Explore Farmington, to continue to increase, I think this is a fine goal because it's something that is with what Rose does, that is one of her top priorities existing now, to continue to increase the, how many people see Explore Farmington and use it. So I think, you know, it, it does, she does spend her time doing it, but she does that, that's, but she does that now. The budget, that's the thing, you know, a lot of reds, a lot of time, so that's that.
Not sure whether that should be a green and money.
Well, it's a green and money.
I, I got you, I got you. It's the cost of doing the budget, not funding the budget.
Not the budget, yeah, yeah. Yeah, in reality, you could make these all red.
Right.
Because it's costly, it's complex, and it takes a ton of time, so. New goal, this one with the Farmington Public Schools, with the, we're, we're going to have to have a decision about this. I had spoken with Joe, and I had asked him if would this had to be a red, because do we have to have a policy decision before we have the new budget? He said, no, it can stay in the place it is for now. So this yellow honestly could probably go to a, a green.
A green, okay, all right.
We just, this, I would aim to get this for not this budget, but for the next budget.
Okay.
So that's where that is. The tax relief one, I think we should, I think this is, if, if, if people are in agreement about my concept about the elderly tax and looking at this at this time, we should be doing it now. I think it goes hand in hand with the high school, I think it's a good match. If you don't, then I'd push it out, so.
I, I would say I definitely agree with it, and I'd also add, can we add veterans and disabled veterans to that as well? Because I've had disabled veterans reach out to me.
Yeah. Yeah, what I'll do is I'll, I'll wordsmith this and I'll take it to say that we're looking at the whole ordinance.
Okay, great.
Because that is the whole ordinance.
Perfect.
Okay. Okay, so that's red, so that would be a committee.
That's great, I think as you said, as we're going through things with the high school, I think this is very important. We've had a lot of kind of deep dive questions on impact of the high school, and this certainly affects the impact of any taxes on all our people.
This is our delegation, it's red because they're coming next month, it's immediate, but it's green, so no problem.
Town council, I'd like you all to change that to a yellow, because you've got to do your homework and have the proper questions for it.
Manage the town departments, obviously, it's timely, it's all the time with me, and it's my staff time, it's a lot of staff time, but that's, that's my job. Yearly report for the town council, again, it's something that, it's yellow because it's not due until June, that's when you guys review their, on my yearly report, so not bad. Ad hoc legal, that's something we should be doing, we're, I'm getting ready, I would recommend definitely red on that. We can't, we need to transition our legal team if we're going to do that, so we need a committee on that soon. So I'd continue, I'd keep that as a red.
And that is our contract outstanding right now, so we need to.
Yeah.
Make sure we either confirm or.
Yeah.
Gotcha. Get someone to do that, either way.
Town council goals, that's my, me doing agendas and things like that. Again, the way we're going with meetings, that's becoming red hot. And that's that.
We switched from two meetings a month to two meetings a week.
Yeah. Green efforts, again, it's red because it's happening now, but it's really, it's, it does have, it is a committee that does meet, I think, regular basis, yeah, monthly, so it does, it does take some time.
And just to note, before you go through, the five point nine, that's the new desired outcome. We're always trying to improve our communications and transparency, we're just making that an ongoing, not a goal for any one particular year, this is something we're emphasizing we're doing every year, all the time.
Right, exactly. Ten-year comprehensive for Tungusas Meat Park, and again, we, I put that out as green, twelve to twenty-four months, but it does take some staffing. I'd like to see this done before our budget of not this year, but next year.
Okay.
And so that's where I am with that. That's the one that I did do as a green because it's truly a staffing type that would be This one is about bathrooms. We've done some, this is not the first time that something like this has come up and people have asked a question about it. So I don't think there's that much real work to kind of talk about it and see what the, where people stand on it. So I, I'm okay with it being yellow. Again, this could be one, it's a new initiative, could be moving at the end of the yellows.
Well, the nice things on this one for a yellow is that would kind of get us into the summer months when our trails are most used. That's why I'd like to see that at the front end, and if there's anything we do decide we can do, we could even possibly get it done in this summer season, so.
All right. That's it.
Any questions on anything on the strategic?
Yeah, just one on the last one here, I think this is a great idea. I'm wondering if you guys think it might be good to also add, for them to look into potentially adding like a water fountain or, or water bottle refill station, and maybe that's located near where some of our businesses are and kind of attracts people.
Yep.
The, and the key sort of on that one, not to deeply dive into these, you know, if it's a permanent bathroom and you have to have water there, then it's an easy add. If it's a temporary bathroom, like a Portejon-type bathroom that's in the sun, a little more difficult, but definitely we add that to the discussion.
Great, thanks.
If it was a water fountain or a water.
Bottle filling station.
Yeah.
Because we don't use cups, plastic cups on the trail, we use water bottles.
You know, I, I think we really, and I've been suggesting, I don't think there's really that much we're going to move into green right now. I think that I'm, I'll try to work with CJ and kind of what I've done in the past is sort of put like three-month look-aheads and like off these goals of like how we're going to do it. Like I anticipate the legal one, that Subcommittee being ready to go, like next February, we need that one to go. Some of these other Subcommittee, I think we should, you know, there's a lot going on, but I don't, I think we, I think we're in the middle of a lot of stuff, so it's hard to just say, let's, we can't really not do it. Right?
Yeah, I agree.
So.
We're just going to be very busy for the whole two years. Do we?
So if you like it and you don't want to have anything else, it would be a motion to approve the strategic plan, just so you know what will ha, what would happen if that's what you choose to do, it would be approved. This is just my goals. After I get our goals collectively, then I have all my department heads, they do their goals, like I said, when I said they move, they will all be behind this, and they're a yearly, they're a yearly goal. And then you'll get a new, you'll get a book that has your, your updated strategic plan with this, and then all the depart, my department head calls, excuse me. So that's how it usually works.
Okay, so Peter, would you like to?
I'll make a motion that we approve the town manager's strategic plan. Would that be a proper motion?
No.
No?
It's the Town of Farmington.
Oh, okay. I make a motion that we approve the Town of Farmington's strategic plan.
Oh, hold on, let's see what it says.
We just switched from consider to approve, right?
All right, so we're going to consider?
No, just to approve.
No, we just say approve.
To approve.
Oh, all right. To approve the attached twenty twenty, twenty twenty-two Town of Farmington Strategic Plan slash Town Manager's Goals.
As amended?
With it, yeah, as amended.
As amended.
And what amendments are you?
And Kathy has the sheet of all amendments here.
We really.
As discussed, would you say, or as amended?
Yeah, we really didn't have any.
Because the only thing were timeframes, really.
When we really didn't do that. We just kept them a yellow, but I just said we'd move them later, so.
Yellow plus.
Yellow plus.
But just make the Bryans as in as amended, correct?
And, yeah, Bryans.
And it would include the couple of comments I made as well.
Yeah, how about as dis.
We have a whole ordinance for the tax relief, adding water stations.
Yeah.
The two things that were changed.
Yeah, having Bryans, Bryans.
Polio.
Agenda.
Yep, and, yeah, I think that would, that was it, so.
We'll get this from the mayor.
Yep, okay, as, as discussed.
To approve the Town of Farmington Strategic Plan as amended.
Right, good.
Okay. I'll do the whole motion again? No?
No.
Okay. I'll second that for you.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Passes unanimously. Before I ask for a motion to adjourn, Benjamin Franklin endorsed all that we are doing tonight when he said, "By failing to prepare, you are preparing to fail."
Thank you. I like your quotes.
May I have a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn this evening's meeting. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.